All right, everyone. The time has come for the Monday. September 16th, 2019, regular council meeting. Roll call, please.
Alderman Taylor.
Present.
Alderman Bolton.
Present.
Alderman Seager.
Present.
Alderman Mozio.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Present.
Alderman Newsom.
Present.
Alderman Turner.
Present.
Alderman Rivera.
Present.
Alderman Florian.
Present.
Mayor Cunningham.
Present. Coming to lead us in prayer will be Pastor Eugene Edwards at a place called Home Baptist Church. Pastor Edwards, please take the podium. We're immediately following the prayer. Our Waukegan Park District personnel will be leading us in the Pledge of Allegiance. All rise. Let us pray. Gracious God, most heavenly Father, Father, we come today in your presence to thank you for your loving kindness and grace. We pray, God, that these proceedings, oh God, will be done decently and in order, oh God, and according to thy will. Bless us, oh God, keep us, oh God, lead us, we pray, in Jesus' name, amen.
Amen.
(Inaudible) United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Janice wants to do the pampers. One on your side, and we'll give you what this is all about in a minute. The first thing I want to thank, the pastor who knew to wear the Bears jersey and uniform That's only one of the 12 wins we're going to get this year. Second, here's my disclaimer, since I have everybody in here today, again, look, everyone, this right here is what we call 20, and it says, "Be counted, Waukegan, 2020 census." We're going to keep repeating this every week so everyone understands how important this is to our community. So, please, keep coming to council meeting. We're going to keep saying it because we need this message to get out. This is the most important thing right now for 2020, for the city of Waukegan. We have roughly 90,000 people that have registered according to our census count. The services that must be given to residents of this community is well over 125,000. That gap is because we were not counted in the last census. 2020 is our opportunity to speak so we can then get the resources that is needed to provide for our community. So, thank you. Please pass the word, all the leaders in the house. You are leaders. We need folks to understand, you cannot be afraid to be counted. That's the public service announcement. Mayor's comments. Fiesta Dispatches Parade, this weekend. The Fiesta Dispatches Parade was a great time. What a wonderful event, and I love seeing all the families and friends as they come out to celebrate the Latin American countries. APWA, we got the award here. American Public Works Association. Mike Hewitt, are you in the house? As he comes, Mike Hewitt, Director of Public Works, will be coming forward. A week ago, the city of Waukegan was honored to accept the American Public Works Association, National Project of the Year for Disaster or Emergency Construction Repair for the Washington Street Culver. Mr. Hewitt, I'd like to congratulate you and your Public Works team and all those involved for replacing the Culver and reopening the road access in two months, in two weeks, although the APWA said this project should have taken well over two years. We hope, but we hope to never experience that sort of emergency project again. To add, all the sidewalks, curbs, and final roads should be completed in mid or late October. Is that correct?
Before October, yes.
Before October. So, ladies and gentlemen, I'm going to present to Mr. Hewitt and his team on behalf of the city of Waukegan, and it reads, APWA, American Public Works Association, Project of the Year Award Disaster Emergency Construction Repair, less than, I'm using the word, less than $5 million, and it's presented to the city of Waukegan Department of Public Works for the Washington Street Culver and replacement. Congratulations, Mr. (Applause). Hey, good job, Mike. Congratulations, Mike. (Inaudible). Right here you go. Give your team members here. I'm going to take the papers, though. Hold it up like this. You ready? Come on. Seager.
(Inaudible).
Congratulations, Mike, to your team. All right. Fresh water. You good? That's putting it bluntly. We want to send our condolences to some residents and the Bonds family and to the Waukegan Public School District, some members of their family. Please keep them in your prayers as they go through the loss of, I think, two several members of the Waukegan Public School District family and Mr. Bonds. Mr. Bonds lived on Indiana, was it Indiana? Mr. Bonds on Indiana roughly 60 years, the Bonds family, so keep them in your prayers, please. Lakeshore Connectivity, the Northern Lakeshore Trail Connectivity Initiative wants your input on the bike and pedestrian trail in Waukegan. There is an iPad which is located directly outside the council chambers where you can make suggestions. There will be a public meeting on Thursday, September 19th, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. at the Jack Benny Center for the Arts. Today, I was happy to join Senator Bush and Chairwoman Hart announcing their ongoing request. The EPA will conduct 90 days of testing and will be holding a public town hall meeting to provide information regarding ethylene oxide. The hearing will be Wednesday, October 7th, at the College of Lake County in Graves Lake. For more details, please call 847-548-5631. Casino Public Hearing, this Wednesday, from 8:00 to 4:00 p.m. I'm sorry. From 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. From 4:00 to 8:00 p.m. there would be a public hearing on the casino proposals. Each proposal, each proposal team will present in a random order, and following the presentations, the city consultants will present a preliminary report. The public will then have an opportunity to address the council on the presentations. Written comments are also able to be submitted to the clerk's office or to the email address Again, casino@waukeganil.gov. If you are unable to attend the meeting, the meeting will be recorded and later made available on the website. CDBG Public Hearing, the city is asking that the residents participate in an online community-wide needs survey to assist the city with prioritizing community development and housing needs. The survey will be available through October on the city's website, in English and also in Spanish. In addition to online, hard copies of the survey will be available in the Waukegan City Hall, probably either on the second floor or the first floor. The results of this survey will help determine the use of public funds, including city's yearly allocation of Community Development Block Grant, better known as CDBG in home dollars. Upcoming events. Art Walk is this Saturday from 5:00 to 9:00 p.m., including a blues show at Sterns Plaza. What Sterns Plaza is, it is the old Sterns building at Water and Genesee. Tepperin Flyer in Parking Lot D, Orleans and Paco at the Genesee Theater, and Lake County Dance Showcase at Trap Auditorium. See www.artwalk.com for details. The city is partnering with Swallow Co. and the Waukegan Park District again on a community recycling event on Saturday, October 5th, 10:00 a.m. to 1:00 p.m. at Bevia Park. This event includes recycling of wide variety of items and finding new homes for bikes and musical instruments. The Waukegan Historical Society's annual tour of homes is Sunday, October 6th, 1:00 through 5:00 p.m. Tickets are available at Jack Benny Center for the Arts in Olson's Ace Hartwell in downtown, as well as Day of the Event at The Stop's. All right. That concludes all of my comments. We are now at item, item two, Resolution Proclamation that being done. Item three, audience time. Madam Clerk, am I too loud out there, folks?
It got adjusted today.
Okay, yeah.
It got adjusted.
Oh, we do have a proclamation.
We have a proclamation, and it's not, and under consent.
Okay.
All right, we have three minutes. Dylan Burdette.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for letting me have this time. So, as kind of the local ethylene oxide expert, I've been asked to weigh in on the new ethylene oxide bill. Unfortunately, this was written without any input from the environmental justice community or environmental justice organizations. It was a problem that we saw with the last bill as well, and it's a problem that is going to become clear why that might be important moving forward. So, the new bill is HB 3888. It's this new bill that was introduced to regulate the emissions of ethylene oxide in our community. As was noted by Representative Joyce Mason on the day that it was announced, it moves much more slowly and less completely than Senate Bills 1852 and 1854 to eliminate the emissions of ethylene oxide in our community. The distance and amount limits listed in this bill are based on estimates using existing technology and do not rely on solid health and scientific technology. In this bill, it describes instrumentation that's measuring emissions in parts per million when we already know that the dangers presented by ethylene oxide are present at thousands times below that in parts per billion and parts per trillion. The third point that it introduces is the possibility of underground storage of ethylene oxide in our community, which may not be a good thing because it introduces the possibility of tons of ethylene glycol being introduced into both the Des Plaines River Basin and the Chicago River North Branch Basin, as well as introducing a sort of claymore effect where we will have bunkers full of essentially a bunker buster munition within our community. However, it is good, it's a good step in the right direction, as we say, any sort of attention that can be paid to this issue is important. We look forward to amendments and possible improvements to this bill as it moves forward. Thank you.
Kathy Charity.
Hello, Mayor, City Councilman. Kathy Charity, 900 Block of McAllister. Okay, last month, I was driving east on 10th Street, and I was hit by a hit-and-run driver, illegal driver. He made a U-turn in the middle of 10th Street, near Washington Boulevard, near the Pace Bus Company. I swerved into the lane to avoid serious head-on collision or a side collision with him. I made the swerve so sharp, it sent me into the oncoming traffic, thanking God that I was not hurt. Okay, it took Waukegan policemen 45 to 15 minutes to get there. Terrible. I was told that all the officers were busy. Really? This person didn't stop, just kept on going like most of people without insurance do. I've been in this community over 30 years. This was my second time being hit by a driver with no license. I'm tired of it. Not mentioning that the brand-new store up on 10th Street in Lincoln, there are six stores up in that one block, more traffic, okay? A lot of people going up and down 10th Street. On Washington Boulevard and 10th Street, there are a lot of homes with seven, eight, nine, 10 cars piled up. I was hit by a car pulling out of one of those homes. Unacceptable. I don't know if we need new, cold people employed or what. This is a problem, and making a U-turn in the middle of 10th Street is a serious problem when they have school buses and pace buses driving down there. I've just been bringing this up to my Alderman. Not only that, there's a lot of activity on 10th Street. We know what that type of activity is. There are people knocking at my doors at night. I've noticed the same people on 10th Street. I don't know what they're looking for, but I assume I know what it could be. My neighbors been having people knock on their doors. All I'm saying is that, I brought this up to Alderman Bolton, and I know she says she's been working on it. First Ward needs a massive cleanup. If not, many of the First Ward constituents will be forced to move out. That's it.
Thank you. Diana Burdette.
I'm taking advantage of this time that the room is filled, and I'm going to let you know a little bit about ethylene oxide. It's a known carcinogen. It's in our air. It has been proven that it has been in our air for decades, and the highest reading was 500 times higher. So, it's a known carcinogen, mutagen, causes chronic diseases and also acute diseases. For over a year, we've been asking for the Illinois EPA to come in, and you heard from the mayor, they're finally coming in and doing a town hall and providing information to all of our community, and it's essential that we all be there. But something that wasn't mentioned was that we will have a satellite room at the Lakeshore CLC Campus, and that's at 33 North Genesee. For those who cannot make it to Graves Lake on time, we will have another room at the Lakeshore Campus, and it will be in both Spanish and English. Please be there. But, as usual, this isn't the only health issue that we are dealing with, so we are also going to have immediately, the next day, another Illinois EPA meeting. On October 3rd, we will have the EPA coming in and talking about an acid rain permit for our community. NRG has requested an acid rain permit. We need to stand united on the 2nd, and we need to stand united on the 3rd because this is our community. These people cannot come in and release cancerous gas into our air and cause acid rain on our people. So, we need you, community, on both those days, on the 2nd Lakeshore-Graze Lake Campus, and we will need you on the 3rd at the Whittier Elementary School. And that's going to be from 6:30 to 8:30 p.m. If you have any questions, connect with CleanPowerLakeCounty.com or Clean Power Lake County on Facebook, and you can feel free to come up to me and ask me any questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Colin Byers.
Hello, council members. Mr. Mayor, my name is Colin Byers. I was born and raised in Waukegan, and I've recently returned after a few years of international development work and graduate research. I was studying climate change and global sustainability, and there are so many alternatives for 32 acres of land that are community-friendly and environmentally positive. I served in the United States Peace Corps for three years in the Republic of the Philippines. The second of the three goals that the Peace Corps is founded upon is to help promote a better understanding of Americans to the communities that you are serving. One of my long-term service projects was a voters' education campaign, and one question that was asked of me was, "How much does it take to buy a seat on the Sanguillian Bion or City Council in the United States?" It's customary in the Philippines for the night before polling for candidates to sit outside of small stores or on porches and dole out cash and food for votes. I was proud to answer that while there is corruption in U.S. politics, it's not so quite out in the open, and that maybe I naively was not sure. How disappointed do you think I was when I came back home to Waukegan and got an answer? A public record of exactly how much a special interest group paid for some of the seats that are on this dais. To promote the development of a casino that is known to be harmful to the community and the environment. Think about if this is what Waukegan needs. Please care for your people. We are telling you that it's not what we want. Please listen to your people. This is harmful to the community you represent. Please protect your people. Please think about what votes a community that is suffering from increased crime, foreclosures, and addiction might have to take in the future regarding new social service mitigations needed to answer a host of problems that come with the casino. This is, of course, if you get reelected. Do you feel lucky?
Charles Rush. Charles Rush.
Thank you.
You have three minutes, sir.
The reason for me to speak tonight has been changed. It was decided, I guess, at previous meetings that Alderman would not be able to question the developers on their proposals for the casino, that it was, comments would be limited to the audience only. Well, I guess maybe true democracy may exist to a limited form here in Illinois and Waukegan, and the powers that be on this matter, probably a developer or two, have changed their minds and will allow council, those who will be making the bigger decisions here, will be allowed to speak. So, I look forward to that meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Pat Cosgrove.
Good evening. My name is Patrick Cosgrove, 10 North Sheridan, number 903. I've been teaching at Waukegan High School for the past 27 years. During my first few years, I rented at the, at Waukegan's Fox Crest Apartments, and I moved back to Waukegan in 2008 when I had the opportunity to purchase a condo at the old Hotel Waukegan. Currently, Harborview Waukegan LLC owns 56 of the 58 units in that building, and they're now threatening to force me to sell at $130,000 below what I purchased my unit for. I don't want to sell my home at any price. I own it free and clear. These past 11 years, living in downtown Waukegan, been the happiest years of my life. My condo's location has allowed me to give my car and shrink my carbon footprint. I'm steps away from the Sheridan Road-Pace Bus Stop where all area routes converge. I'm just off the bluff from the Metro Train Station, and I'm a five-minute bicycle ride from work. The views from my ninth-floor balconies are breathtaking, overlooking the blue of Lake Michigan, the green of Greentown, and the Chicago skyline in the distance. It's the perfect place to watch sunrise and to watch the Independence Day fireworks. Being at the heart of Waukegan has afforded me the opportunity to see hundreds and hundreds of shows, concerts, and performances at such venues as the Genesee Theater, the Clockwise Theater, Three Brothers Theater, Karcher Arts Base, Family Piano, Steiner Pavilion, the Library Courtyard, CLC Courtyard, Jack Benny Plaza, and Sterns Plaza. The walls of my condo are adorned with artwork from Waukegan artists such as Mary Claire Jakes, Mary Neely, Mary Haas, Jay Stevens, Wayne Munn, Austin Cantu, Jacob Rickman, David Motley, Dylan Blake, Peggy Rash, Patrick Tufo, and the Waukegan Historical Society. Most of these were acquired at Art Walk, various art walks, and the Dandelion Wine Arts Fest. I am a supporter and/or member of the Waukegan Historical Society, Friends of the Waukegan Public Library, Waukegan Main Street Organization, Waukegan Arts Council, Waukegan Chamber Music Society, Waukegan Symphony Orchestra, Waukegan Band Foundation, Waukegan Concert Chorus, Waukegan College, and I sing next door at the Choir of First Presbyterian. My point is, I support Waukegan in many ways, and any support Waukegan can give me to help me keep my home would be greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you. George Butina.
Good evening. This is the first time I've ever spoke at a council meeting, so I'm a little nervous here. I'm a 30-year resident of Waukegan. We're 30-year residents. There are three things that are very important that I've seen in the last few months that I'd like to hit very quickly. First, the wonderful work done on streets and curbs are going very good. Unfortunately, the potholes are still in a number of, at least seven different streets that have never been touched in about three months. They need that first because, I mean, the cars can get pretty damaged with some of them that are four, five, six inches deep. The second thing is, you're right near the airport. I would hope that the city of Waukegan takes advantage of all the business that might go through that airport in the future. Thirdly, I've seen a lot of unsafe things. We have a Walnut Street that runs, supposed to be 30 miles an hour or less, and it gets to be 35 and 40 with school buses, trucks, city trucks, county trucks, and a lot of other little cycles and things. Even though it's got stop signs at each corner, it can get over 40 miles an hour in about six homes, and we can measure that if you want to. The most important thing tonight is that we were reading in the Book of Proverbs the other day about government. God has appointed all governmental people. It's in there, and Jesus backs it up in the New Testament. You have major responsibilities coming up with this casino, the Front Lake, Front Lake. The building that the gentleman spoke about just recently, my son was the second manager there. It was started with some bad money, but it connected all the way up to the president's serving in that company at one point, the last president. But the place is beautiful for so many different things, and nobody should be forced out unless they're really taken care of because it's a beautiful view, beautiful view. Last of all, I just want to thank you for the help that so many of the workers in Waukegan are doing, including the mayor and the Alderman. We do need you to think about what your positions are. It's a very important spot in a big area that's right in the middle of everything right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack Dai.
Good evening. I won't take a lot of your time. I just have a quick question for everybody up there at the dais. I want to know why the Waukegans community had to put up with months upon months of campaigning in flyers in my mailbox every day about economic development- that are four, five, six inches deep. The second thing is, you're right near the airport. I would hope that the city of Waukegan takes advantage of all the business that might go through that airport in the future. Thirdly, I've seen a lot of unsafe things. We have a Walnut Street that runs, supposed to be 30 miles an hour or less, and it gets to be 35 and 40 with school buses, trucks, city trucks, county trucks, and a lot of other little cycles and things. Even though it's got stop signs at each corner, it can get over 40 miles an hour in about six homes, and we can measure that if you want to. The most important thing tonight is that we were reading in the Book of Proverbs the other day about government. God has appointed all governmental people. It's in there, and Jesus backs it up in the New Testament. You have major responsibilities coming up with this casino. The Front Lake, Front Lake, the building that the gentleman spoke about just recently, my son was the second manager there. It was started with some bad money, but it connected all the way up to the president's serving in that company at one point, the late last president. But the place is beautiful for so many different things, and nobody should be forced out unless they're really taken care of because it's a beautiful view, beautiful view. Last of all, I just want to thank you for the help that so many of the workers in Waukegan are doing, including the mayor and the alderman. We do need you to think about what your positions are. It's a very important spot in a big area that's right in the middle of everything right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Jack Die.
I won't take a lot of your time. I just have a quick question for everybody up there at the dais. I want to know why the Waukegans community had to put up with months upon months of campaigning in flyers in my mailbox every day about economic development at Fountain Square. It's going to add jobs. It's going to add tax jobs. We'll lower your taxes. We'll do everything. And I read through the proposals online, and I saw a lot of redacted information, specifically number of jobs created, specifically the financial impact for the city of Waukegan. So we're going to have nine people up here who are going to vote on these things, who I'm assuming get to see these numbers. And I do know four of those people up here got a lot of money by the same person who's applied for this casino. They spent more money at mailers to get people elected than they have spent any time. I mean, go on social media. You look at Facebook, look at Twitter, look at Instagram, you'll see all these things touting, "We're going to have this great experience. We're adding concert venues. We're going to do this. We're going to..." "We're a partner for the community. Love us, please." How many jobs are you going to create? Redacted. What's your financial impact for the community? What's your tax revenue going to be? Redacted. We'll tell you when we get it. I'm sorry, guys. I mean, there's none of you up here. Now, I don't dislike any of you individually at all. I think you guys all have your own pluses and minuses. I think that you guys suffer from group think. I think a lot of people need to realize that as a collective whole, all nine of you make the decision where all of these people in the city of Waukegan, this place is packed, it's been packed for months now. We're all here to see where our leaders will take us. Please take us to a good place. I don't have the power to help out. I don't have the power to do anything besides give you my voice and my opinion. Just do right by the citizens of Waukegan. Please, I'm just asking that, and that's all I have to say. Have a great night.
Thank you. Margaret Carrasco.
Wake up, Waukegan taxpayers of Waukegan. This casino deal is not a done deal because the city must first approve the sale of the land with a supermajority vote. That means seven out of nine votes. Does the mayor have them? I don't know. In the event it is approved, Waukegan taxpayers, I assure you, will unite to do everything possible to prevent the mayor's good friend bond from getting the casino deal. Next. I've been out in the First Ward speaking to a lot of people who really know about what goes on here in the city of Waukegan. I assure you, they are First Ward, middle-aged African-American men. They get together every single day, and I'll tell you, they know things that our council members don't know. So we came up with a proposal. I, Margaret Carrasco, will not speak at a city council meeting till the end of the year if our mayor, Sam Cunningham, agrees to take a drug test and pass it. Thank you.
Mayor, audience time is done.
Well, thank you all for coming. Don't forget, be counted 2020. All right? Don't forget about this now. All right. All right, here we go. Does everyone want to leave now, or you want to stay? Okay. Listen, sometimes what happens is that folks come to our council meeting, and they say what they want to say, and audience time, they want to leave. So if you do, I will give you an opportunity to leave so we don't disrupt. That's all. All right, we good, everyone? All right, here we go. Item four, consent agenda. There's a motion, there's a motion by Alderman Kirkwood, second, by Alderman Taylor, to do a consent agenda on items 4A through items 4S. There's a motion on the floor. Are there any items that need to be taken out of that?
I'd like to out.
All right. We got Alderman, Alderman Newsom?
I'd like, I'd like to take out item I.
Item I, item I is being removed.
And also, there's an amendment to item P.
An amendment to item P. Let's, let's take out the, let's take the ones we want out first, and then we'll do the amendments, okay?
So that one needs to come out too.
It needs to come out. Item P. So items I, 4I and 4P are now out of the consent agenda. Alderman, okay, Alderman Turner, then Alderman Rivera, and then Alderman Florian. Alderman Turner.
Thank you, mayor. I'd like to call out items D, L, M, and R. E, L, M, and R.
Okay. Alderman Rivera.
Oh, thank you. I would like to take out item H.
Okay. Could we use this one? Okay. No problem. Item H.
Mayor, one more.
Item, who said mayor? Item, wait a minute. Alderman Florian, did you?
Taylor.
Alderman Taylor?
I don't know if I want to take this out per se, but on item U, we are missing a signature off of one of the forms, and for our records, we should just update that.
Yeah, we'll get it updated then. We'll get them updated. All right, everyone, I used a, an agenda that went up to only S. I've just been given the, a correct agenda. You might have them in the audience. So we're going to, it's going to be four, consent is items 4A through U. Four, items 4A through U. Of those, items D, items H, items I.
L.
Yeah, items L, M, and P, along with items R. No, we're just going to correct the signature. All right. Are out of the consent agenda. Are there any more?
I believe you said H.
Yes, I did say H. No, I got it. Give me one minute, folks. D is correct. Resolution authorizing recapture. Resolute authorizing recapture. Motion to approve intergovernmental agreement. Motion to approve contract Deland. And? Motion to approve contract kills. Grant competitive bidding process. You two go, Pete. Yeah, I was. And? Motion to raffle. All right. Under consent agreement, with the, with the correct agenda, it's going to be items 4, items 4D, 4J, 4K, 4N, 4O, 4R, and 4T are being removed from the...
H?
H, you didn't say.
No, no, no.
The one that they have?
Yeah, I think, some, I have the correct agenda here. It has items 4 through U.
Right.
So what I've done is taking, just so everybody understands, we are doing the ratification of a reappointment. That's item D.
Right.
Authorizing recapture agreement, that's item J on my. Items K is...
No.
No, no, no. What did he say, J?
You need H.
H and I.
You want H?
She want H and I?
Yes.
Yeah. No, no, no. Everybody, I have, I have an agenda that you do not have, that's why. So items, items H on your agenda is recapture.
No, H on R is not.
Bezley Place.
Is it Bezley Place?
Yeah.
All right.
403.
403, okay.
Yeah.
Okay. H and I.
I. L and M. And then P.
All right, we got them?
You're going to be...
R. Okay, and then T. All right, so those are the ones that are being removed. No, we just, we just get them. Yeah, we get the correction. Those are the ones going to be, those are the ones going to be removed from the consent agenda. Alderman, we're good.
Okay.
All right, and I apologize, I just, Jenny, you already had them highlighted.
You need your thing.
I will. Because I don't know what I'm doing.
You're going to read them then.
I don't know.
She's going to read them. She reads them anyway.
Slowly, make sure.
All right. So there's a motion on the floor, and what's going to be read is what's going to be voted on now. Everything circled, Janet, is...
Okay. Going to be read. If I get it wrong, tell me. All right. Item A, motion to approve regular payroll dated September 13th, 2019, in the total amount of $1,644,767.51. We're not doing B?
Yes, do it.
Okay. All right. Item B, motion to approve elected official in civil service stipend payroll dated September 13th, 2019, in the total amount of $6,566.66. Item C, motion to approve vendor payments dated September 16th, 2019, in the total amount Skipping, item D.
Correct.
Item E, proclamation, diaper need awareness week, September 23rd, 29, from September 23rd through the 29th, 2019. Item F, motion to approve the Little Fort Lions Club request to hold its candy days on October 11th and 12th, 2019, in accordance with the Lions of Illinois statewide fundraising. Item G, an ordinance increasing the age of sale and purchase of tobacco products from 18 years of age to 21 years of age to comply with state law. Not item H, not item I, not item J, not item K?
Yes, yes, yes.
I'm sorry.
J and K.
J and K will be read.
J and K is okay. All right. Item J, a resolution authorizing a recapture agreement between the city of Waukegan and Nicholas Nikotakis. Item K, motion to approve an intergovernmental agreement between the city of Waukegan and the village of Wattsworth for snow plowing. Item L, motion to approve the use of city property fee waiver.
No, L comes out.
No, that, not that one?
L and M comes out.
L and M comes out. Now go to N.
Okay. Item N, motion to approve the award of a contract to Deland Construction LLC, the lowest-qualified bidder, in order to make sidewalk improvements in an amount of $869,628. This project utilizes 2018B general obligation bond funds. This matter was heard at the Finance and Purchasing Committee.
Item O?
Item O, motion to approve the award of a contract to Kelso Burnett Company, the lowest-qualified bidder, in order to make street lighting improvements at Norman Drive and North Point Boulevard in the amount of $258,580. This project utilizes 2018B general obligation bond funds. This matter was heard at the Finance and Purchasing Committee.
Item Q?
Item Q, motion to grant an extension to the contract awarded to Strategic IT Staffing LLC on November 19, 2018, for a total amount of $108,000 and a revised end date of April 30th, 2020, in order to provide IT staff augmentation services. This matter was heard at the Finance and Purchasing Committee.
Items S?
Item S, motion to approve the attached resolution for maintenance prepared by the city engineer and filed with the Illinois Department of Transportation as required by the Illinois Highway Code for the period of January 1st to December 31st, 2019. This matter was heard at the Finance and Purchasing Committee. Item T, motion to approve all raffle sales applications. Yes, yes, okay. Item U, motion to approve all block party applications?
Yes, we're fine.
Yeah, we're fine.
It's just a signature. No, we're fine.
Okay.
Item U, motion to approve all block party applications. All right. All right, there is a motion on the floor for the items that were read. Are there any other questions to the motion? Roll call, please.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Mayor, before we go on, can you explain the diapers, since we just approved it?
We have a resolution. So read the resolution.
Okay. Diaper needs awareness week, September 23rd through the 29th, 2019. Whereas diaper need, the condition of not having a sufficient supply of clean diapers to keep babies and toddlers clean, dry, and healthy, can adversely affect the health and well-being of babies, toddlers, and their families. And whereas, the national surveys and research studies report that 1 in 3 families struggles with diaper need, and 48% of families delay changing a diaper to extend their supply. And whereas, children go through 6 to 12 diapers each day during the 2 to 3 years they wear diapers. And whereas, purchasing enough diapers to keep a baby or toddler clean, dry, and healthy can consume 14% of a low-wage family's post-tax income, making it difficult to obtain a sufficient supply. And whereas, a daily or weekly supply of diapers is generally an eligibility requirement for babies and toddlers to participate in childcare programs and quality early education programs. And whereas, with or without enough diapers, babies and toddlers risk infections and health problems that may require medical attention and may prevent parents from attending work or school, thereby hurting the family's economic prospects and well-being. And whereas, the people of Waukegan recognize that addressing diaper need can lead to economic opportunity for the state's low-income families and can lead to improved health for families and their communities. And whereas, Waukegan is proud to be home to one National Diaper Bank Network member, twice as nice mother and child, that recognizes the importance of diapers in helping provide economic stability for families and distribute diapers to poor families through various channels. And now therefore be it resolved that Mayor Cunningham and members of the City Council of Waukegan, Illinois, hereby proclaim the week of September 23rd through September 29th, 2019, as diaper need awareness week in the city of Waukegan, and encourage the citizens of Waukegan to donate generously to diaper banks, diaper drives, and those organizations that distribute diapers to families in need to help alleviate diaper need in Waukegan and the state of Illinois, adopted this day of September, 2019.
Okay. Any other questions? Yeah, this organization is doing a fantastic job. I think they moved from Gurnee to Waukegan to the industrial park right off Delaney Road, and they help young families with newborns, I want to say up to about four or five years of age. They can go every week to get not only diapers, but also baby food that's needed for those families. They're doing an incredible job over there, so I'm going to extend another. For all those in this room today, here's a public service announcement. If you want to donate, please stop by. They service well over 200 families a week. This is a need for young, for young families to get, and if I don't know, I know last time I bought diapers, they were expensive then. I know they're expensive now. So this is a well to do on our end. Any, any other questions on this, Alderman? All right, we'll be dropping these off, dropping these off ourselves. You're welcome to bring them to City Hall. I think Jenny have a box downstairs for donations. You can do that as well. So anyone, please do that. Thank you. All right, so now we go on to item D.
All right, so now we go on to item D. Motion by Alderman Bolton, and second by Alderman Rivera, to ratify the reappointment of Lawrence E. McShane to Waukegan Public Library Board. Any questions? Larry, are you here, Larry?
I am here.
There he is. Hey, Larry.
I just want to thank the Mayor and the Council for my reappointment. It's been such a wonderful experience and a blessing to be on our library board. We've done so many exciting things. We hired a new library director, and he's proven to be a very effective leader. He provides our young adults area, our high school area, to make it more current, more comfortable for our students and our students. We have now a new librarian who sent out all of us to Waukegan and has all the activities pre-announced. The calendar dates of our library. We're so proud of that. We're proud of the Sandy Sherwood Garden, 30 years of service with the library. And we dedicated that garden over there on the south side of the library. For Burke, beautiful garden, beautiful memory. Slap it for Burke Flowers. And of course, there's our Ray Bradbury statue. Not only the library board, but our principal library. So many workers in Waukegan came together to get that going. It's been a Burke of love, a neighbor. We've grown, we now shelter. This was dedicated 3 weeks or so ago. Wonderful event, the Waukegan Symphony Organs, who was there, all kinds of VIPs, the public. It was an exciting, wonderful event. This statue of ours has been put on in the Boston, Washington, all kinds of news stations. And everything in this destination point comes to see what's happening in Waukegan. And all in honor of our Ray Bradbury, our native born, wonderful, prize-winning, aside eye writer, science fiction, Jack Benny statue just down the street. All kinds of exciting things are happening here in Waukegan.
Thank you.
I'm so pleased and honored to have been a part of that, Mayor, and the City Council, all our fine and excellent citizens of Waukegan. I'm so looking forward to the chance of having another 2 years at it.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Larry McShane. Any other questions?
I'd just like to make a real quick comment on the library board. I think often the library is overlooked in the good work, the great work that the library board does. And I'm happy to acknowledge all of the library board members. Larry, we've known each other for a long time. He's very dedicated to the library board, as have several others, and they're making great accomplishments. And I'm really happy for all the good work that's coming out of the library. Very excited, and thanks for serving Larry.
Thank you. All right. There's a motion on the floor in a second. Roll call, please.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Mozio. Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Item H, most resolution authorized the purchase of 4003 BZ plays pursuant to a settlement agreement. There's a motion on the floor by Alderman Bolton, second by Alderman Seager. Any questions? Alderman Florian.
I went and looked at this property, even peeked in the backyard. It's a full-sized lot. There's a house, there's a driveway. The neighborhood seems to be fairly stable around it. The thing that concerns me about this, it doesn't show here, I don't believe, but initially when I read the document, it said it was gonna be divided again between the neighbors, and that kind of bothers me because I think this lot is perfectly... There's a driveway and a garage. And so I just wanted to say although we've done that with other properties, I'm not so sure that I want to see that happen with this one.
Yeah, ma'am, this is a settlement agreement.
Right.
Did you read the settlement, the situation where?
I did.
We... No, ma'am, that's...
Okay.
Okay.
We're not dividing it at the present time, anyway. That would be something to be determined later on.
Okay.
Yeah. Alderman Rivera?
Is this something that should have gone through committee, or?
It did.
It did.
It did last, at the last meeting.
Yeah, it did.
Okay.
I believe we had it on the agenda.
Yeah. Yeah, this is part of a...
We voted on that at the last meeting.
Yeah, this is part of a settlement agreement. It's...
Okay, thank you.
So to clarify, we're not, we're just taking over the property, but we're not doing anything with it.
Yes. Yeah. No, it's none of those things right now. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
Item I, motion by Alderman Newsom, second by Alderman Turner. Authorized, the resolution authorized the conveyance of the Carnegie Library to the Waukegan Park District. Waukegan Park District? Oh, you know, I had Historical Society in my... I'm sorry. Waukegan Park District. Alderman Newsom.
I had quite a few questions. And I understand that this is just a process to start, I guess, to start the negotiations because there's a lot of items in there under the conditions to closing that really puts the city on the hook for basically everything. And making sure that this building is almost up to par before we even transfer it over. So as these conditions, as far as waiving all fees, future fees, and we talked about the abatement, asbestos, lead, and I know a few questions were answered earlier that there's none there, but we didn't have that information stating that there is no asbestos there now. I guess it was done some 20 years ago, and you all have the paperwork on that. Can we get that information so that we'll know? And then also... The parking spaces that you would like? Is that up the hill or across the street from the... Was that hotel that the guy was just apartments?
The old chateau?
Yeah, it's on Sheridan.
Yeah, 20, you want permanent 20 parking spaces there? Okay. And has anyone been in the building lately, within the last month or so? Is it airtight? So-so? Okay. So the city is responsible for making sure that building is, before we convey it over, making sure that everything is airtight? And then we... Do we have it under insurance now?
Yes, that's part of the city's property.
Okay. All right. I just had a lot of questions. And since it didn't go through committee, I know this is probably not the final draft. If we start the process to turn it over, is there more work that's gonna be done on this contract before it comes back to this body?
This isn't a contract at all. This is a non-binding letter of intent. The idea being that the, this is the first step toward a contract. And what the idea here is, is that the Park District, and Mr. Kam, you were instrumental in this, and I think you've done a great job so far, has found a potential source of funding of up to $5 million to bring the library back to life and to repurpose it to things that the community can use. This would, is nothing more than a statement of the city's intent that it wishes to see this project move forward to the next phase and that we find a way to make the conveyance at the appropriate time once the funding is in place and we know that it's really going to happen. Because if it does happen and that library comes back to life, it's gonna be quite a crown jewel to return to the City of Waukegan. That place was great when I was a kid. I can't tell you how many years ago that was, but it was a long, long time ago.
Yeah. Okay. Those were the questions that I had, since it didn't go through committee and it just came on the full agenda.
All right, Alderman Turner? No, I don't have any questions. You have any questions? Yeah, we certainly, I think these are some of the... These are gonna be the negotiating points as we move forward. But we will certainly be bringing back to this body what the final was, and we move forward from there. But thank you for bringing those items out. Duly noted. All right, any other questions to the motion? You can do a voice for it, right?
For this, you can do a voice.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Foes? All right, item I. We go into item L. Motion by Alderman Florian, second by Alderman Rivera, to approve the use of property, city property, fee waiver, fee waiver in waiver of noise to exceed 50 decimals from 4:00 PM to 5:45 for the Most Blessed Trinity Walk for Life, special events, permit pending submission of proper paperwork and staff. Any questions to the motion?
Yes, sir, I have a couple of questions.
Yes.
One in particular, a statement and a question. Often we see these motions come before us to waive fees, and we have 2 back-to-back waiving a fee for use of city property because we do charge a fee for special events, but we keep waiving fees. And even, it reminds me when we did the Afro Fest, we went so far as to waive our entry fees for non-residents to the beach. You know, if you drive, if you bring a non-resident car, you don't have a city sticker, you have to pay a $10 fee to enter into the beach. And we waived that because someone was having a party or an event at the beach. So I just, if we have fees, if we charge fees, I don't think we should keep waiving them. I think it's unfair to those who ultimately don't get waivers, right? So only certain parties come and get it. I see that both of these, L and M, are not-for-profit entities. So maybe if we don't want to charge not-for-profits, maybe we need to adjust our ordinance and say everybody pays a fee except for not-for-profits. But every time someone does a special event, they come up and say, "Well, I got a special circumstance, I don't want to pay a fee." And I don't think that's right.
Duly noted. And we're certainly gonna be taking a look at our special events application actually at the end of this month.
Right.
Our goal is to get through the summer months. And as I said, all of these events, there are a lot more activities going on on our beaches today than they were 2 or 3 years ago. So while these are great things that are 3 linear mounds of beach, it's more active, but when more activity comes, there are more problems, and those problems have to get worked on as we move through.
So I just want to make clear, you know, I pulled these out so that, you know, for public awareness, or where my thought is, and for you to have an opportunity to say what you've stated, that we are looking at our...
Yes.
Special events ordinance and how we're gonna go forward with that because there's been, and we've already had some discussion previously along these lines about how we need to restructure and handle special events. But I like to put this kind of stuff out for the public's awareness as well. So I'll vote for it, both of them, but yeah, thank you.
Thank you, thank you. All right, there's a motion on the floor in a second. Any questions to the motion? You can do a voice again on this, right?
Yes, sir.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Item M, motion by Alderman Turner, second by Alderman Rivera. Any other questions to the motion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion's passed and carried. Items P, motion by Alderman Seager, second by Alderman Kirkwood, to grant an exception to the competitive bidding process pursuant to Section 2-458I8 utilities to approve the award of the contract to Comcast Enterprise Services in the amount of $320,125 for a period of November 1, 2019, to a period of November 1, 2024, to provide dedicated fiber optic connections from the City Hall to the water plant. All right? Excuse me.
They had to make an amendment.
They made an amendment.
He's making amendment.
The amendment was made in committee, so on the floor. It's, he's reading in the actual...
Well, thank you.
amended.
Thank you, audience, for being so observant. So that's good.
We're good.
Can you explain why the amendment?
Because we took out the fire departments. It's not covering, it's not covering the, not the fire, yeah. It's not covering the fire department.
Fire station.
It was City Hall, Water Plant, and Fire Department for the $412,000, but the fire stations came out. So now it's only 320,125.
Aren't the fire stations already done?
They're going under the 911.
Cool. Okay. Any other questions? Audience? I'm just kidding. Any other questions? Roll call on this one now.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
All right, motion by Alderman Kirkwood, second by Alderman, I'm sorry, Newsom, to grant an exception to the competitive bidding process pursuant to Section 2-458I3 Government Joint Purchasing Act and improve the award of the contract to Curry Motors Chevrolet in the amount of $295,000 for the purchase of 8 2019... That'd be Ford, oh, no, that's...
Chevy Tahos.
Yeah, that should be Chevy Tahos SUVs in a contract to Harvard Communications to equip the acquired SUVs with certain police equipment in the amount not to exceed $95,000. Any other questions to the motion?
And all those funds are coming out of the drug forfeiture fund.
Yeah. So I asked to pull this out because when I read this stuff, I always have a question. And again, I wanted to provide some level of transparency for the audience. And so when you look at this, $295,000, divide that by 8, you come out with 8 units or 8 vehicles. It's $36,875 each. That's a great price because I looked at several comparison shopping. The lowest or the least expensive model of the Tahoe, the least you can get them for is like 38K. So we're saving over $2,000 by utilizing this Government Joint Purchasing Act contract. We're saving over $2,000 per unit, and I don't believe we're buying the cheapest units. I think we're getting the higher end. So that's why I wanted to bring that out for audience awareness. Thank you.
That's a government price.
And yes, as part of our government contracts, you have state and national. We tapped on, I think, to the state contract for this one. On top of that, we are now turning over our police department fleet. We're probably about 3/4 of the way there, chief? That means we're not 3/4 of the way there. We're getting there. Okay. Yeah. So that's just part of, that's part of, you know, operations when it comes to our police department, fire department, public works. Any other questions? Roll call, please.
Alderman Taylor.
Aye.
Alderman Bolton.
Aye.
Alderman Seager.
Aye.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Aye.
Alderman Newsom.
Aye.
Alderman Turner.
Aye.
Alderman Rivera.
Aye.
Alderman Florian.
Aye.
All right, well, items, that's it, right?
That's it.
That's it?
That's it.
All right, all the items under the consent agenda has been completed. We are now under item 5, reports and communication. Church's report, it is on file. Old business, none. New business, none. Ordinance is none. Closing items, Alderman's time. Madam Clerk. Madam Clerk.
Alderman Taylor. I just want to mention, I am very happy that we made our ordinance match our state law on the tobacco issue, especially in light of vaping issues that have come up. I think this is really important, that our city make this a priority. So I'm, I'm happy about that. I also want to say thank you to everybody who came out tonight. You know, we may not always agree on everything, but I am just really thankful when the public comes out and shares their opinion. And I think, your name is Colin? I want to particularly thank you for coming out and being a young person that understands the climate problems and some of our needs in the community. I know it takes a lot to come out, and I just want to thank you for coming up and sharing. It's so nice, particularly when we get the young people in the community. You are our future. So thank you. Again, I want to mention to people, I'm finding in my ward, there's a lot of garbage being blown all over. Please, I know it's been windy, I know the weather's been terrible, but please, when you know your garbage can has spilled over, please take the time and go out and pick it up. Be that neighbor that is just nice about it. You would not believe the things that are getting stuck to our roads. So please, take the time to do it. Thank you. Alderman Bolton.
Yes, I just want to consent my condolences to the Bonds family. I was very close to them, and they had excellent, just, community representation. Also want to announce again, September 20th, first ward, there will be a dumpster located at Belvedere and Beasley between 8:00 and 3:00 PM. Come and bring your things out, except for the things listed on here, like no waste, no flammable, no bombs, hello? You know, crazy stuff. So we're going to do this one, and then we'll have a third one in October. And don't forget to go to, I believe it's casinoil.org, making your comments in reference to the casino. And I have to thank you for your comments. And I want to make, addressing the issue on, in the 10th Street, I don't know if you all are aware, every ward, an officer is assigned to your ward. So if you want that information, feel free to see me afterwards, and I'll make sure I give you that information, so you can contact him. And I also said in that meeting with the Carnegie Library, I think it's an excellent project, is coming back to life. Thank you.
Alderman Seager.
I'd just like to thank Larry McShane. Good luck to you, and welcome back on Library Committee.
Thank you.
Okay? And I'd like to thank everybody for being here tonight, whether you disagree or agree with us. It's good to see everybody come out. Thank you so much.
Alderman Kirkwood.
Good evening. A couple of things regarding Operation Clean Sweep in the fourth ward. Our next dumpster will be at Hyde Park Elementary School Parking Lot on Saturday, September the 21st, from 7:30 AM to 10:00 AM. Also, the fourth dumpster will be at the Washington Campus Parking Lot on Glen Rock and Victory on Saturday, September the 28th, from 7:30 to 10 o'clock AM.
September 23rd.
It's important that we know that the items not accepted are the yard waste, liquids, tree trunks, concrete, bricks, stone, rocks, hazardous materials. But those are the last two dumpsters that will be held in Operation Clean Sweep in the fourth ward. That's September 21st is Saturday, and the following Saturday on the 28th, from 7:30 AM to 10:00 AM. Also, my condolences go out to the Bond family, had their children in the school. Certainly, it was a very involved family. Also, congratulations to the Mexican Independence Parade. It was outstanding. All of the residents that came out, it was a great time. The weather agreed with all of us. It was an enjoyable time. Thank you.
Alderman Newsom. Alderman Turner.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. So over in the sixth ward, again, we've begun making improvements to our streets and sidewalks, starting in the northwest corner at Lorraine and Elmwood and Longview. I was out there yesterday in the street. They've done a lot of the sidewalks and curbs previously in preparation for the street resurfacing, which has begun. Excuse me. In that program, that program, or those programs, because we have two different programs, the sidewalks and the streets, and they're kind of overlapping in some cases, like where I mentioned, but that, those programs are going to be moving throughout the sixth ward. They're in process now. And if you recall, we just approved almost $900,000 for sidewalk program tonight. So that's coming. I get a lot of calls regards trees that need to be cut and/or stumps that need to be removed. I've been in contact with Director Hewitt and his Assistant Director, Pat Needham, and resources are limited, but they're aware and it's coming, right? So we are going to be working on removing some of those trees and getting up some of these stumps that have to be ground out, and you can't do it when it, when they're wet because you create a big mulchy paste, essentially, right? Nextly, I am happy to announce that State Representative Rita Mayfield and our Waukegan Tax Assessor and I, the three of us are collaborating, to bring you a property tax workshop on October 5th. That's Saturday, October 5th, between 11:00 AM and 1:00 PM. And we'll be discussing how our property taxes are assessed, and several of the tax-saving programs that are available to each of us. And I see a State Representative back there. Thanks for joining us tonight, Rita. Finally, on a very sad note, a friend of mine, Michael Walton, was killed in a hit-and-run accident last night. I just want to offer my condolences to Mrs. Walton, whom I've known for many years. I knew her long before I knew Michael. And my condolences to Michael's, Mrs. Walton and their family on the loss of Michael D. Walton. Thank you.
Alderman Rivera.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'd like to, first of all, make an announcement that tomorrow at 6 o'clock here in council chambers, we will be having the seventh ward meeting. Also, I would like to congratulate the Fiesta's Patrias Parade Committee and all the volunteers who worked to make this event a success. It was truly tremendous. And it really, it really showcased the diversity of Waukegan. And also, I would like to thank everyone who participated in audience time. And I appreciate, and I hear, and I am listening to your comments. Thank you.
Alderman Florian.
Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Oh, thank you, Madam Clerk. I also want to thank all of you for coming tonight and speaking up. We are listening. We do hear you. It's important that you engage with us and make your voices heard. I am personally disappointed that this process that we're going through has never been put on a ballot for the citizens of Waukegan to make their voices heard and decide whether this casino should even happen here, let alone how it should happen. So I encourage you all to stay engaged and keep coming, keep making your voices heard. We're having this forum on Wednesday. I know 4 o'clock is early, but hopefully most of you can make it to the presentations on Wednesday, and let your voices be heard there. I'm going to close with one of my favorite quotes from Margaret Mead. She said, "Never doubt that a small group of thoughtful, committed citizens can change the world. Indeed, it's the only thing that ever has." Thank you.
That's it?
All right. Mayor, if I may, gee, I apologize, I forgot. Ladies and gentlemen, there are flyers reaffirming our upcoming property tax seminar out on the table in the hall, so please take one if you're interested, and always feel free to call me or State Representative Rita Mayfield if you have any questions. Thank you. Good night.
Before we go, Alderman, I want everyone to know, we have been receiving hundreds of calls in reference to who will be attending Wednesday's meeting, public meeting. Right now, as it stands, we know we, we're looking at City Hall, but I'm in, I'm in contact when I'm talking with the fire marshal. I just spoke with him at 4 o'clock today. There might be, there might need, we might need to change the location due to so many people looking at coming. The goal is not to have several individuals standing out in the hallways three and four hours. I'm telling the public right now, help me out, Ms. Emily, we might need to change the location. So we're, we're talking to a couple of people as we speak, and I will try to have that together as early as tomorrow afternoon. So we'll get that out, and we'll certainly get it to you, Emily, and all of our back channels for communications, but I'm pretty sure Facebook is going to beat me. Other than that, I need to make another PSA, public service announcement, to all of our seniors, as we mentioned earlier, about the rebate. Understand that the rebate application period ends September 30th, with the end of this month. You must be owner-occupied for the water rebate, and it's, and we verify that through your tax records over at the county building or at the tax department. Again, September 30th is the deadline for the water rebate. All right? With that being said, motion by Alderman Taylor, second by Alderman Bolton, to adjourn. All those in favor?
Aye.
So to change the venue?
Motion's passed and carried.
Aye.
All right, audience?[1790.15]